All right, we're live. Good evening, everyone. I will hereby call the September 14th Town of Gray Planning Board meeting to order. Welcome. You've got a big crew tonight. We don't usually get that. So, let's see, a couple bits of information to start the meeting before we do roll call. So, first of all, we had a member, previous member, David Phelps, who had elected to resign. So, I heard that information today. His term had expired on August 31st, and he elected to not renew that. So, I wanted to thank David for his service on the board. And along with that, what was uncovered also today is that unfortunately Melinda's term also expired on August 31st. So, we're not going to have a quorum tonight because only Tamara and I are able to vote. But we are going to proceed with the meeting, but there won't be any formal votes taken tonight. We knew there would be a lot of public interest in at least one of the applications, so we're going to hear all that. But there won't be any formal votes taken because there's only two of us, so just so everyone is aware, that's what's going to happen. And then, we're going to proceed. We'll allow Melinda to sit up here and ask questions of the applicant and deliberate with the understanding and presumption that she will reapply and that the council will reappoint her. But just so the applicants know that, you know, may or may not happen, so I wanted to put that out there as well. Okay, so that was a new one. Haven't come across this one yet. So, with that, I'll do roll call. Tamara?
Present.
And Melinda? Present.
I'm present and filling out my application now.
Okay.
Not now anymore, but...
And I'm Dan Cobb, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm also present. So typically, next up, we would approve minutes of the July 13th meeting. We will skip that because we're unable, we are unable to vote on that. So, moving on from there would be information exchange. I think Kristin has some information for us on a few different things.
Okay. So, we do have the estimate of U2 subdivision plan here for the board to sign, and they are working through their conditions of approval to wrap up and get ready to get their building permit. So, there's still a few outstanding items. We're working through them from a staff level. And Stillwater Pines Phase Two, the Woodcock subdivision, will be coming back likely in October. Just so you have an update, the board had advised that they wanted that hydro geological study, and that delayed them a little bit, and they expect to have that in time to bring to you in October. So, that's where those are. As a reminder, there is a training on October 5th, I'm sorry, the annual meeting of all town committees and boards is the October 5th, if you can mark your calendar for that. I don't know, Dan, if we have a time or place, or...
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay. So, October 5th. And then, there is a training coming up from MMA. If you haven't taken the planning board training yet, the reminder was that that is on October 12th. We originally had the planning board meeting scheduled for October 12th. We may be talking about rescheduling that anyway, so you'd be available for the training if you wanted to do both in October. So, that is, that's the update.
Okay. Anybody else have any information? Dan?
No, I don't have anything to pass on tonight.
Me either, so we'll continue to move on. Next up then is new business, which would be to approve the FY 2024 Planning Board meeting deadline and schedule. Again, we're, I think, I mean, we're going to skip this unless anyone wants to make a comment on it. We're not going to vote on it, so if there's any feedback, we can take that, but we're not going to approve it tonight, so... Do you have anything?
I just, I know that I'm going to be traveling for work on the March date, so if there's only three of us on the planning board, that could be a problem.
I think we can probably address that a little closer to the date.
Okay, great.
I don't have any comments on it at this time. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay, so we'll defer approval of that until next time. Okay, next up then is public hearing. So, let me get caught up. Okay, so the council has been working for quite some time on a self-storage design ordinance, and this would be a public hearing leading to your second reading, I believe, right?
Correct.
Your second, second reading?
Our, yes, if not our third.
Right, okay. So, in any event, this is an opportunity for the public to speak, if you wish, on the in-process and proposed self-storage design ordinance, self-storage and village design ordinances. Is there anyone in attendance that wanted to speak to this topic?
I'm Scott Liberty. I recently developed the new Gray self-storage facility on Route 100. What I think we have here is the classic tail wagging the dog. Everybody's heard that term. We have the town council members who just arbitrarily picked on one business, self-storage, implemented a moratorium two years ago this coming December, which was an illegal moratorium, in my opinion. The law for implementing a moratorium says that there has to be an emergency to protect the health and safety of the public. There was no emergency to protect the health and safety of the public. Instead, they've spent almost two years coming up with an ordinance in the commercial district. This whole bit about the village, this has nothing to do with the village. The only ordinance that's affected is in the commercial light manufacturing overlay zone. And that runs anywhere from two miles north of here, all the way to the town of New Gloucester. So, two miles outside the village is the light manufacturing overlay district. And the council has gone from what's currently a 10-foot setback zone to a 300-foot setback zone, 300 feet. They can spin it any way they want. This is basically, they're going to stop any more self-storage facilities from being built. I don't plan on building any more, but it's a taking, in my opinion. We take that property that I took, that was a distressed property with nothing but junk that was there. It had been run down for almost 30 years, and I made it productive again. We've got down on the flats, we were considered grandfathered. Michael Pride is building down on the flats. It's nothing but swampland, and he's going to make that a tax-paying, nice asset for the town. And I don't understand it. And the council tells us, we need to like it. We need to like it. We need to learn to win and learn to lose. And we're the problem. We're the ones that are causing this reputation in town as being anti-business. We're anti-business. We want to support all the businesses in the community. And you pass an ordinance saying you're going to go from a 10-foot setback to a 300-foot setback, and you're only going to pick on one business today? We don't even know why they chose self-storage, but that's what they've done. So, next year, it might be seafood store. We don't like seafood stores. They're too close to the village. They smell. We want them back 300 feet. It might be metal fabrication. We don't like them. They're dirty, they're dusty. The welder's allowed. I mean, this is stuff that happens in quote-unquote democratic Russia, or a capitalist quote-unquote society like China. They pick winners and losers. And that's not how a free market works. People have the right, if they're in the correct zone, to choose what business they want to do. And I just, I think this is super anti-business. And back to the tail wagging the dog. If we were in litigation, both sides would present expert witnesses, and the judge would listen to their credentials, and the judge would approve them as expert witnesses if they had the right credentials. We've had over a dozen business people come. This is the sixth public hearing in the last almost two years, the sixth public hearing. A dozen business people have spoke out against this ordinance, and not a single citizen in the town, not one, has come up here and said, "We agree with this ordinance." Not a single one. And so, when you have expert witnesses, you tend to give them more credibility than you do laypeople. And clearly, the business community knows what's best for the business community. And instead, we get, you're sore losers. Sit down and be quiet, and you better like it. And I don't like it. And I think it's wrong, and I think it sends the wrong message, and I don't think it's the business community's problem. I think it's the council's problem. And then to make, put salt in the wound during this moratorium to save the public from the health and safety of the public, this two-year moratorium, at the end, they slide in, and you've got to have a gate. It's got to be a card-operated or PIN code gate. Why? Their response was, "Well, because we've seen others do it. We've seen others who have gates." Didn't your mother tell you if everybody jumped off a cliff, you don't go jumping off a cliff? I mean, you don't do something just because other, you've seen other people do it. My facility's all wired up. I was all set. I ordered a gate. I was ready to put a gate in. Well, I've come to find out that gates aren't the answer. Gates freeze in the wintertime. They get stuck. People get frustrated. They run into them. They try to figure out how to get them open. They're loud. Every time they open and close, you can hear them. So, neighbors in the summertime, they've got their windows open. Two in the morning, someone decides to use the gate, they've got to hear clickety-clack, clackety-clack, and wake them up. Gates are not the answers. That's why we didn't put a gate in. We could put a gate in, but we didn't. Instead, we put in 4K camera systems everywhere, and I can read license plates and see who's coming in and out, and secure the property that way. But this whole moratorium thing, I think, was, was wrong. I think the planning board was led astray. I think it was just to correct a, a, a typo in the ordinance, and then we find out it's to rewrite the whole ordinance. So, so at any rate, you know, the group has kind of thrown their hands up, and I absolutely believe this is a message to the, to the rest of the world that Gray is still anti-business. And I hope the planning board doesn't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else which wish to speak to this? Okay, don't...
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm also the town council's liaison to the planning board. We have been working on this ordinance for quite a while. We have had lots of meetings to try and find common ground in some places. We've made some changes, in some places we haven't. The 300-foot setback is not an arbitrary number. We don't know the soil capacity of every lot in town, of every piece of property. 3% of Gray is currently zoned commercial. That's all. When a lot's developed, if it's not on public water, you have to take into consideration the need for well. You have to take into consideration the need for septic. In a commercial setting, you have to take into consideration the need for stormwater and parking. The comp plan, which was voted on overwhelmingly by the folks in town, 60-something percent, high 60s, I think it was, was in favor of making some changes to our ordinances and to our zones, and that process is still ongoing. No one's been told they have to love it. No one's been told they have to live with it. I hear a lot of times from people in town that we want town to stay the same. We want it to stay small. We like it the way it is. Gray will not stay the same by not regulating itself. The only way that we will have the town that we want is by creating the ordinances that will protect the things that we think are important. We're not all going to agree on what those priorities are, and we're not all going to agree on what the solutions are either. If you put it in the context of winners and losers, then I suppose there are some. Because every time someone doesn't get their way, I guess they can consider themselves a loser, but I don't think you have to look at it that way. I think the council's goal to follow the citizens' initiative, the comp plan, and all the other things that we do, we have to get elected to the council. Someone has to vote for me to sit there. When Mr. Liberty says, "Nobody's come out to speak for it," just because I'm a town councillor doesn't mean I'm not a citizen of the town. Doesn't mean I can't have an opinion. It doesn't mean that I can't encourage the kinds of things that I think are important. I'm standing down here and not up there because my role is not a part of the planning board. The planning board's a town, create a committee, but they have their own authority under the state statute. No one wants Gray to be thought of as business unfriendly, but regulations do exist, and we're going to have to work together to figure out which regulations we want. And the council has put a tremendous amount of time into these ordinances. It's been a very thoughtful process. It hasn't turned out the way some people want, but we're at a point now where we have to move on to other business. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the board that has anything to add? And I guess what I'll add, just for context, because we have a big crowd here that we don't usually have, this, this process is that the council is working on this ordinance. It comes here to the planning board for a public hearing. It's, this is not the planning board's ordinance. We have an opportunity to provide feedback, just like every other citizen does at these public hearings, and I've previously provided mine at a previous planning board meeting, so I won't repeat that. But it's more just for information, the process that's happening here is the council is working on an ordinance. There's a group of very interested citizens and business people that have been providing feedback all along. They've come to all of the council meetings on the topic. They've come to all of the planning board public hearings on the topic, and that's the process that's happening right now. So, again, we're, we're not going to vote on this. It's, it's a step in the process. The next step is that it goes back to the council for what's called their second reading, which means they will vote on it, and if they approve it, then it becomes ordinance in, what, 30 days after, right?
Yeah.
So...
That's great.
This is just, it's one of the final steps in, in this process, so that was just more, more for information. But I've previously provided my feedback, and I guess, Dan, I would ask that you pass on to the rest of the council that two citizens spoke and asked them to watch at least that portion of our meeting, so they have that feedback.
I will do that. That's the good thing about the videoing of meetings.
Okay, we will continue on then. So, next up is Hemlock Woods subdivision amendment. This is a request by 38 Blackthorn LLC, represented by Teradyne Consultants LLC, to amend the Hemlock Woods subdivision located adjacent to Blackthorn Lane in a rural residential agricultural zoning district. The proposed amendments show Blackthorn Lane, where it was actually constructed, and prior lot divisions in accordance with prior enforcement that has been resolved. The proposed amendments also include creating one new backlot for an existing dwelling on Tax Map 53, Lot 43-02, and eliminating the conservation designation for common area on the original subdivision plan. Do we have an applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just give me one moment while we resolve an IT issue. Thank you.
Sure thing.
All right. So, just a one second. Great. So, now, this laptop is now on the screen. It needs to be over there. Ah, okay. Sorry. No worries. That wire...
This is the part of the meeting where we advocate for a dedicated laptop for the council chambers.
I mean, I was going to use yours.
It's okay. No, yeah, I've been fine. You should have had a room on homework, definitely. That's a good project.
We could all do it together.
So, while we pull this up, I'll, I'll just begin. My name's Laura Harts. I'm an attorney with Drummond-Woodsom in Portland. I represent the applicant, 38 Blackthorn Lane LLC, which is just a two-member LLC. I have one of the members here with me this evening, Tony Fernandez, and then I also have Jimmy Corbone, who's here with me from Teradyne Consultants. He's one of the engineers on this project. I understand that we don't have quorums. We're not actually asking for a vote tonight, which is fine. We would like to still present the application and hear from the members of the public that are here to comment on the application so that we can incorporate any feedback and be prepared for the next hearing when you do have quorum. So, 38 Blackthorn Lane LLC is proposing to develop this, well, actually, we're proposing to carve off this small portion of an existing lot. Let me switch presentation so you can see the actual presentation, not my notes here. One second. See if that works. Okay, thank you for your patience. So, this is a relatively simple request. We're asking for the board to approve the creation of a backlot in conformity with the zoning ordinance. The reason why it's a backlot is because the property is accessed by a private road, Blackthorn Lane, which is off of Route 115 here in Gray. Property's located in the rural residential agricultural district. The carving off that, you know, we're trying to accomplish is because there's an existing house on a 30-acre lot that you can see circled in red here. What we would be doing is creating a 2.15-acre lot and then a remainder lot of about 28 acres. This is the plan that's proposed before you today and when you eventually vote. This plan, my, my clients only own the property outlined in blue, so the application and the plan before you only encompasses that property. The blue highlighted area is what would be the remaining area after the single-family house is carved off. The orange shows the single-family home with a garage, existing septic and well. The division would really just to be to accommodate that already created dwelling. The reason why this is a potentially complex request is because the subdivision was originally approved in 1989, and there's a long history of properties in this subdivision that were not developed in conformity with the 1989 plan. So, what that means is the developer ignored the approved plan and just reorganized the lot lines, changed the road, changed the septic, changed the lot dimensions, and didn't get approval for any of those changes, even though they should have. This is just a depiction of the difference in the road, for example, between Woods Lane and Blackthorn Lane. There's a lot of differences between the 1989 plan and what the current layout is. I don't have to go through all of them here. The biggest difference that I think is most important, there's two really, is the different orientation of the road. So, that's Woods Lane versus Blackthorn Lane. You can see that the original road goes through some of the existing lots, or rather, the previous lots as proposed in 1989. That's shown in green. But the other big difference is that in 1989, 14 lots were proposed. They were all relatively small, about 1, 1.2 acres, with a relatively small amount of frontage. That was in conformity with the cluster subdivision ordinance in play at that time. Today, what was actually built out is seven lots with a larger size, so 1.8 to 2 acres, more frontage, individual septic. The, I guess, request here is that we carve off that lot and then prepare the rest of the remaining land for development in some capacity. We don't know what that development would look like. The client, my client, the applicant, is dedicated to preserving at least eight acres of the remaining land to conservation, open space in some capacity. We don't yet have a Phase Two proposal, which is what would identify the exact development for the rest of the land. So, you know, I, I think, big picture, the ask is relatively simple. It's just the creation of backlot. That's the first stage. When we come back in January or February, we'll be asking for something more complex. But at this point, I'd like to take questions from the board and potentially from the public when you open the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, and for everyone's benefit, we did hold a workshop on this this evening at 6 o'clock, so if you don't hear any questions, it's not that we're not interested or don't have them, but we already spent an hour talking about it, so they may have been answered. But any questions at this time?
I have no further questions.
And I don't have any questions at this time either.
Thank you.
Thanks for that background again, for everyone's benefit.
Sure, I'm just thinking, we talked about this so much before, between 6:00 and 7:00, but I probably should have said for members of the public, the violations on the subdivision have been lifted, so we're no longer encumbered by the zoning violations. We're just looking to carve off that backlot. But yeah, I'd love to hear from persons in public. Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll kind of work our way through that. So, I'll walk through Kristin's memo. So, no waivers are requested, and nothing from the engineer, town's engineer, because at this point, it's just a lot split, so no feedback. Have you had a chance to read through town staff's comments, which are 1 through 5?
Yes, thank you.
And did you have any concerns about any of those?
I don't think so, but I just want to confirm here. Nope, we're fine with all of these comments. Thank you.
Okay. Did the board have any comments on staff's review?
Not that we didn't already cover in the workshop.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have anything great, great now either. So, at that, at this point then, I'll open this application for public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this application? I know we had a couple members at the workshop.
I'm Debbie Redman, and I am a resident of Blackthorn Lane. I'm the second lot in...
If you could sign in, I think that there's a sign-in sheet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm the second lot in on Blackthorn Lane, and when the original violation was brought to the attention of the town, it was brought to the attention by two of us, the first two lots on the lane. So, I guess my biggest concern at this point really is the road, and I know that that will go to Phase Two. But when the violation was brought to the attention, and what had happened was the last, the lot that we're talking about separating out, it was foreclosed on by the bank. And so, the bank owned the road. So, through the whole settlement process, we discovered that the road was not to code. So, part of... So part of the settlement was to bring the road to code, and I don't remember if it was state code or town code. So with the creation of more lots, the concern, I, and I speak for myself, not the rest of the lane, would be if there are more lots put back there, the road's gonna have to be extended, and I'm not sure what the development process is, if the town is gonna have to accept the road, or if it will stay as a private road, at which point, the members of the road association are gonna have to vote for the upgrades and who's gonna pay for the upgrades to the road. That would be our biggest concern, and I understand that that doesn't come until January, when phase-two of this process happens. And I appreciate being part of the workshop earlier this evening, and I did hear comments about the preserved area and whether or not there would be trails, or if it would be open to the residents of Gray. And again, my concern, and I'm sure the rest of the residents of our road, would be if it's gonna be opened up to the public, again, is the town gonna accept the road? Where are people gonna park? You know, how far in is the road gonna have to go? And, you know, what kind of engineering, because we know that there's wetlands back there. And even walking down the road this afternoon, the pools of water on both sides of the dirt road right now are just amazing. So those are my comments and concerns, and I understand that it won't be until January, but those are things that myself, as a resident, and again, I'm only the second house in, and there are houses further closer to where these lots would be developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Josh Martel, also on Blackthorn Lane, number twenty, next to Deb. I guess, you know, personally, I don't have any major objections to splitting off a lot. I think that's fine. I think what's difficult about this is not knowing what phase-two is gonna look like. I think that's, that's one of the problems that, you know, I certainly have a hard time wrapping my head around. Couple of single-family houses, probably no big deal. Go in a different direction, it becomes, it could become problematic. So I'm looking forward to learning earlier than later, maybe what the plan is, to have a little bit of a heads-up about what's gonna happen.
Thank you. Anybody else, either in the room or online? Don't see anything, so I will close the public hearing portion of this application, and I'll offer you a chance, if you wanted to answer any questions at this time. Feel free to do so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Yes, I guess just two points. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Redmond and Mr. Martel. You're exactly right, Ms. Redmond, the road would have to be improved in phase-two as part of any development. And you're right also that the road association documents describe that the road association would pay for the improvements to the road. I think the goal of the applicant is to develop the road in such a way that it's possible to be accepted as a town, so you don't have to pay for that. But again, that's something that we talk about for phase-two. And I hear you, Mr. Martel, in wanting more detail about what phase-two is, and we'll work on that. And my hope is even before the next meeting, when we have, hopefully, a quorum, we'll be able to speak perhaps even a little bit more clearly about what that could be, but we look forward to continuing speaking with you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we'll get you through what we can for our discussion points. There won't be any voting, but we can probably get you a bit more information, so I'm just gonna kind of walk through those next. So first one, does the board find the application complete with the consideration of those items deemed non-applicable by the applicant as reviewed by staff? Any comments there? Like, would you find it? I mean, it's just sort of a straw poll, just so they know where they stand?
Yes, it looked complete.
Okay.
Same.
And I would say the same, however, what I'll say, and we talked about this at the workshop, is that it starts to get intertwined with phase-two and what might happen. And there was discussions, the applicant mentioned, being committed to saving, preserving at least eight acres of open space. As part of the motion that's in front of us, when we vote on it, includes extinguishing that open space. So I, for me, I would say, yes, it's complete with respect to creating the two lots, but I would not be prepared to agree to extinguish the common area at this time without knowing what's happening. And it would be the same thing for the eight acres, and we talked about that in the, in the workshop, that there's, there's wetlands, there's a lot that could be at play with what, what might happen. So for me personally, I think it's complete as far as creating two lots, but that would be as far as I would be willing to go. So I just wanted to put that out there. And that goes along with number two. Any comment regarding the newly created lot? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
It's dividing a lot, so there's not a lot there.
No.
Other than the baggage of what's happened over the last twenty years.
Right.
So again, number three, comments regarding the land access, location, acreage of open space as part of the review of this phase, there's really, I mean, there's not much we can do as part of this phase. I think the, the access is at the end of the road, correct? So, I mean, that it's logical, it's what you would expect. The rest, again, without, if we're just creating a lot, it's not really pertinent at this time, I think, to provide any feedback. And then the last discussion point was on feedback on the eight acres. For me, I don't have a position on that one way or the other. I mean, the number, that is.
I was gonna say, I definitely feel that there should be some open space.
Yeah.
The exact amount really depends on what's being proposed.
And the location.
Right, exactly.
So it all plays together.
One thing that occurs to me is when we do, when we are able to grant this amendment subdivision approval, I would be inclined not to speak to the open space at all and be silent on it, rather than make a determination that is just not with enough information. So I don't know if we need to just, like, check in with staff and make sure that we're not missing something there, but I would hope that, given the history here, that not, not, to just be silent on that at this stage of the approval would, would still work.
We can have those discussions and speak with the applicant as well about what they were hoping to achieve with this particular phase-one before you. I think my understanding at the time is they were hoping to achieve board feedback regarding the open space and acknowledging that you would be willing to have it reconfigured effectively from the previous plan. So the, the number four in your memo that references having a condition that the, any subsequent division would retain at least eight acres of open space is kind of a placeholder, so that when phase-two comes before you, yes, you're weighing in on where it is, how much it is, but you've got a minimum locked in, and they know that it's part of the, part of the deal. But that's, yeah, we can have further conversation on that certainly before you would actually be even voting on phase-one.
Just a follow-up question. So are we able to disconnect the creating the lots from the discontinue Hemlock Woods common area as shown on the original plan?
Sure.
I believe so, yes.
We can modify, that's a draft motion, that we can do whatever we like with.
Great.
It's that way before you, because that was, that was what the applicants had, had asked to do at this stage, in this phase, and that's why it's before you that way. We can have those discussions, but based on your feedback tonight to them, have some more back and forth and figure out next time.
So I guess Melinda and I have both spoken on the common area piece of it. Do you have feedback for the applicant, where you would be with that?
Yeah.
As far as including it, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with what you both have put forward. I think it makes sense to hold off on that until we know what, how it's going to impact it during phase-two.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I think you've got your feedback there, that, and from the workshop, we are definitely open to reconfiguring and, and creative solutions, but to us, that piece is just too intertwined with what, you know, the next phase is going to be, that, that's not something we would, you know, you've got the feedback, we're not gonna vote on it, but it's probably, it's more, most likely not gonna make it in any motion to create the lot. So I think my read is you could get the lot created, and it would be created with the same potential constraints that it had before it was one lot. And we'll get you that, we'll get you that far with phase-one, and I think everything else becomes part of, you know, what the overall solution is. So I think that's it, unless you have any other questions for us at this time.
I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're all set.
Okay, anything, any last things from the board? Okay. All right, so we'll close out that piece of the agenda and continue on, and thank you for coming. Okay, next up is Campbell Acres subdivision amendment. This is a request by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers, for an amendment to the Campbell Acres subdivision to divide the plus-or-minus-seven acre parcel off Jenny Drive at tax map twenty-eight, lot seventeen dash twenty-eight dash oh-three into three lots. The proposal is subject to major subdivision plan review located in the Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning District. We have an applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is JP Conley. I work for DM Roma Consulting Engineers. I'm here representing McDonald Brothers Custom Builders, and our project is located off of Jenny Drive. It's a seven-point-one-two acre parcel. I, I probably do. I, as a, my intent tonight was to present the changes that we've made since the site walk, discuss the waivers that we have requested and changes to that, as well as, we're looking for approval of the preliminary subdivision this evening. Being that there's a quorum and there's a large audience, I'm really not gonna go into my formal presentation tonight, unless the board prefers me to do that. I prefer to give the audience the time to present their concerns and comments at this point and, and go into that discussion. Just really quickly, I'm gonna show, I'll filter through the plans, and I'd like to turn it over to the board for further comment, and then...
Yeah, I guess, I mean, you can share whatever you want to share.
Great.
So, you know, you've been here before, so you don't need to give us everything, but
Certainly.
Anything that's new is, is best to focus on.
I've got some windows open that I, I just can't close for whatever reason, but hopefully I can get... Apologize. I'm working off a non, a foreign laptop to me. So here's our project site. This is Campbell Shores Road. There's Jenny Drive in our project site right there. The subdivision that created our lot is shown here. It was amended subdivision, and it was approved by the planning board back in July. It's a seven-point-one-two acre lot that is in question. This is our subdivision plan. I think the changes I'd like to discuss and show are related better, or shown better on this plan. First of all, we had comments at the site walk regarding buffering, and we, we made revisions to lot three and lot one's building location and driveway location to accommodate a much bigger setback than we had shown before. This plan is a, is our subdivision, which I was gonna use for my primary presentation plan this evening, and it includes the aerial image to show relationship to the project, to the, the surrounding areas. In particular, this lot right here, lot one, we have revised the driveway to come off the end of the road versus adjacent to, in perpendicular, or parallel to the turning, the hammerhead turnaround, which achieved basically a twenty-eight, twenty-plus, twenty-five-plus vegetation save. So now where we had a nine-to-ten-foot difference between the proposed tree clearing limits and the property line, we now are looking at a twenty-eight-foot distance at, at minimum at the closest point. Pulled the, the building back and pulled it further away from the lot there as well. Lastly, we have some photos of the duplex that the architecture is based on. These were constructed by the applicant, and are, they want to repeat this architecture on this property. So there's a side view. There's the rear of the building, and a little shot of the patio. Let's see. I think at this point, I, as, in regards to the waivers, I'll just quickly touch on that, we would still like to request a waiver from the high-intensity soil survey, but we were, are going to provide with the next submittal, or the final, at least by the final applica, or final subdivision application, we would be presenting HHE two-hundreds as well as nitrate plumes associated with those, designed by a geologist, to address the, some of the staff's concerns about the wells in the, in the area, and, and we'll basically be able to understand better where the, how the, how the septic fields will interact with the, the ground and, and the surroundings. Aside from that, I'd like to take on any comments I can at this time.
So you're still planning to request high-intensity soil?
Correct.
And not hydrogeologic assessment?
Correct.
And what about the stone concrete monuments?
We are going to request a partial waiver from that. Some will be pins, some will be concrete monuments at, at the road, at bounding building or property, proposed property corners, where there are no encumbrances such as stone walls, other things like that, we're gonna be using concrete bats, or granite bats.
So in keeping with the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And the street light is another one to...
Yep. We, basically, we've gone through all the staff comments, we've gone through peer review comments, and we've actually made one submission to address many of those, and we've actually gotten feedback prior to this meeting on, on that, that plan. I've addressed the other comments that we've received, but it wasn't timely enough to present to the board and to the planning department for giving them time to address those. I probably would have had a week maybe to get those to you, but I expect those, that's in the to come again. Honestly, it was gonna, hoping, assuming approval tonight, we were gonna be submitting early next week for final subdivision.
Okay, so just so I understand, are you additionally requesting the streetlight waiver? Or?
No, we, we were willing to work with, we, we don't really want the streetlight at the top of the hill at the end of the road, because it would exasperate the, the buffer situation. We don't wanna put a, a light at the top of the hill and, and show that, you know, we'd prefer the, the light to be at the intersection, or we have a intermediate utility pole that we're gonna bring overhead up the project and then underground from there. That would be a good opportunity. That runs at about station two-fifty on the plan. So that would be roughly in this location. Rather than having it at the end of the road here, we thought that would be a better spot, or the existing utility pole around here would be a better spot.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's an interesting one.
It might, might be something that would be good to get board feedback on, if you...
Certainly.
Looking to do that tonight, just the ordinance requires it at the end of a dead end.
Yep.
And they're saying that if they put it at the end of a dead end, they're concerned about light pollution to the butters.
Yep, okay, I'll get there.
Thoughts on that for him?
I'm going to start with the consulting engineers' feedbacks, everything, everything from Will, is there anything there that you took exception to, or?
No, quite frankly, I should have mentioned this earlier, the new plan, we are proposing a modified road section. It's the same road section width for the minor street, private street, so it's still going to be the twenty-two foot width, however, we're, or twenty-foot width, we're, we're going to pave eighteen feet, so the road will be paved for eighteen feet. This section will not meet the rural public easement street section. Aside from that, all the other comments from Gola Palmer, we feel very comfortable we can address.
Okay. Did the board have anything on the engineers' comments?
It's good to hear the applicant can address that.
Yep, yep, I'm good with that as well, okay, so staff comments then, anything there other than the streetlight that was of concern to you?
No.
Go back to that one.
I've met with the staff, and I don't believe we have any outstanding, I don't think there's anything that's an impasse for us.
Okay. And is there anything in the staff comments that the board wanted to talk about?
The light.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's on the list, so anything other than light?
The other thing about the driveway location, I'm, I like having it being removed, the new location farther away from the neighbors, and so I'm curious about how we can split that baby to make it both away from the neighbors, but also not have a snow plowing problem.
If I may, so with the fact that this won't be maintained by the town, and it will be private, the private snowplow maintenance people will, will look at the driveways and the road in the same manner, they'll be plowing them all in one shot, they're not going to come back, you know, plow the road, come back and do the driveways. What we're going, intend to do is show snow storage areas at the end of the road, as well as on Lot One, and essentially, with that, I think we've addressed the town's concerns. My interpretation is that would be acceptable to staff.
Okay, so back to the streetlight then, so your preference would be to have it at the intersection, or have...
Honestly, my preference would be not at all.
Not, okay.
But being that it is part of the ordinance, and we didn't want to just sidestep it and, you know, say no. So we're open to installing one at Jenny Drive, at the intersection of Jenny Drive, where there's an existing pole, or even at the intermediate pole, which is just sort of, just behind the, the stormwater basin, and about halfway up the road.
So I guess it's an interesting thing, like, what's the value of a streetlight up at the top of the hill in the middle of the woods?
Precisely.
I don't know, I have that question.
That's why they pay you the big bucks.
Yeah, I didn't write the ordinance. Any context on, I mean, I can...
I didn't write, that's what the ordinance says, at the end of a dead end, there's supposed to be a streetlight.
And it makes some sense at the end of a longer dead end, I guess, or at an intersection, but I don't know, I mean, I don't, it's a lot of light pollution for not a lot of benefit, seems like, but...
Yeah, so, I mean, the board wants to weigh in, I think the intent was probably that a lot of these are out in the woods and get dark towards the end, maybe for safety or for turnaround, for plowing purposes at three AM, I, I don't know.
Chair, is this something that we could just say, no, you don't have to do one?
Well, if he requests, if he requests a waiver, then we can waive it, or not.
I mean, I like to see less light pollution, so I'm a little bit, I, but at the same time, you can have a downward facing light that doesn't pollute as much, the problem is, is the hill, so I don't know, I'm...
My general line on waivers is, give us a good reason why you can't put one, so that's the starting point. So I don't know, I mean, I feel like a, a light, you know, a downward facing...
Well, this would be a, a streetlight, there wouldn't be a different fixture.
Yeah.
I mean, this will be a, a public piece, CMP would be responsible for maintenance, CMP would own it.
Right.
So they're going to put whatever fixture they choose, and unfortunately, it's going to be one of those large sodium halide.
Yep.
I, my, my take on it is, I'm, I'm a big proponent of public safety. Generally, what we see is where snowplows are turning around, or other vehicles are doing that sort of thing, that it's, it's rather important. In this scenario, intersections are in other places where it's important to have adequate lighting, you know, I, this isn't a very large traffic generator, so I prefer not to have one, and I will consult with my applicant to determine if they'd like to pursue that waiver, but at the same time, too, we're open to doing, we're amenable to anything on, with regards to the streetlight.
Okay.
Should get some good feedback tonight, too, from May as well.
Yep, that's a good point. Yeah, so I guess we'll see whether you include that waiver request or not.
Certainly.
I don't know that I have a strong feeling one way or the other at the time, because there's good reasons on both sides. I guess I'll bring this up now, and it will come up later, but Mr. Light provided a very thorough and compelling memo to the board, and you are on copy with lots of design feedback, and I put a lot of marks on it for a lot of good things that I felt should be incorporated, so, I mean, I guess at this point, I'll, I'll put it in the same bucket, and we can answer, and maybe we wait until, yes, he's here and he may speak, so maybe we'll wait, but there's a lot of good stuff in there that you need to consider, I guess I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. I don't want to, I'm not going to walk through it in the same manner as the memo, but we'll wait and see what comments he has, and you can answer at some point, I think you guys may have even spoken, so...
We had spoken previously, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I'll, I'll leave that there for now. Okay. I think, for me, on the, the wa, the marker waiver, I agree, like, some combination of monuments and not where there's stone walls would seem appropriate, so whatever you align with the town on would seem to be fine there. So I'll put this out there, you're going to get it anyways, but it's, I guess it's not quite definitive, because you talked a lot about duplexes, and you showed a picture of one, but you also left some flexibility in some of your proposed...
Yep.
HOA discussions about whether it would or wouldn't be one.
Correct.
So what does your applicant think about doing single-family homes here? Is that on the table, or not?
It, it's not the preferred option. Their, their feeling is that it's allowed, it's allowed use, they've gone through the effort to create architecture for these buildings, they fit on the lots, we do understand the concern for it, but again, I don't know if that, the planning board is the appropriate place to discuss whether or not something in the ordinance should be changed or not. I won't say that they don't have the option in the future to, to look at that differently, but I think going forward, the board and, and the audience should expect that they are duplexes as they are intended and shown now. You know, subdivision approval, it gives them the ability to build the lots, code enforcement enforces the rules in terms of what building permits can be issued. There's no, if, if the board approves a duplex, I, I believe, the, or if the, the board proposes a plan that shows duplexes, they could be changed in the future, we're approving the lots, not the, the houses themselves here, and so there is the option that the, the builder could go to codes with a permit showing a single-family home versus a duplex, but for all intents and purposes, we're, we're looking at duplexes on this subdivision.
Okay, and the one that you shown, that you showed the picture of, are those, that picture, it looked familiar to me, were those built off of Route, one fifth, is it, no, it's two oh two still there?
I don't know.
You don't know?
So honestly, I thought this...
Just for context, I, I think I know where they are.
I, I'm shooting from the hip here, I thought this was another project that, I mean, I thought they came from another project that we worked on in Wyndham, and I, I've seen similar, it looked very familiar to me as well.
Okay, so the architecture's done on them. So I guess, two points on that, one, Mr. Light provided some pretty compelling arguments that I think need to be considered by you and the applicant, and two, your experience here will be much better if they were single-family houses, but that's for you to endure after we hear from the public.
Yep.
So if you would consider that, I'm sure there's a lot of people that would be a lot happier than that.
Well, I, I agree, I, you know, I, I present good projects, I present some projects I don't really like. I, I like this project personally, but at the same time, too, I don't believe it's the planning board's position to approve a project because I like it, or deny it because I don't like it, they have to approve it based on whether it meets the standards and requirements of the ordinance. At this point, I believe this project does meet the standards.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board for now? Okay, so I will open this application for public comment. Just, I guess I'll ask before I call on anyone, could I just kind of get a quick straw poll, how many people are intending to say something? Okay, so not a huge amount, okay.
I thought you should.
So I'll let whoever wants to go first step up to the podium, and if you would sign in and tell us your name, and let us know your thoughts on the project. And just for process-wise, if people have questions that go along with your comments, this won't be a back and forth of answering questions.
It's not, see, that's what I'm used to doing.
But...
That's what I prefer, honestly. Do I have to put my address on here?
Honestly, whatever it asks you to fill out. So what I'll say is, if you do have questions, go ahead and state them, I'll ask JP to step back up to the podium after everyone has spoken, and he'll answer what he can, but it won't be back, it'll be a lot of one-way, you guys telling us what you have to say, and then once it's all done, I'll ask JP to come back up and collectively answer the feedback, just so you know what to expect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First comment is that I really don't want to see duplexes, because it's going to destroy our neighborhood. I feel that it's going to take our, the valuations of our homes down, I don't see how a duplex can increase the value of our homes. I'm worried about the traffic, this is what Kim Shelley had sent to the board, the traffic, the maintenance of this development, who's going to maintain the yards? Who's going to do their trash? I, that's just, I mean, that's stuff that we need to be concerned about, and we're a very quiet neighborhood, I mean, we don't have many cars coming through, we don't really want all that other traffic. I just, I don't, I, I don't, I don't mind the idea of a single-family home, because it's going to be less cars per family, so to speak, but I, I do have an issue with the duplexes and the safety of my life. Questions? Mary Beth, Mary Beth Willett.
Okay, thank you, yep. Looks like Kim beat you to it. We'll get everyone in, so...
Yep, well, I'll be quick, too. My name is Kim Shelley, and I've been a resident there for thirty-five years, I believe. No, to please know, to attract to a streetlight, we're a quiet, family neighborhood. When it was established forty years ago, it was single-family homes, I do understand that this was a section along Jenny Drive that belonged to the Wieldens. Now it's been developed, is going to be developed, all for single-family homes, please scream to them, we would love to see families that are coming to stay, that is what we've had. How many of us here have been there for over thirty years? Yeah, and everyone who comes rarely leaves. It's where we raise our family, you walk your dogs, there's no streetlights. Duplexes just don't fit with the architecture of our neighborhood, that's how we all feel. Single-family homes, yes, because that's what the neighborhood has been, and we want to meet new families that are planning on staying and becoming part of our neighborhood. I can't, I'll let somebody else have a chance to speak.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Peter Willett, I live at Eight-Freight Circle. My biggest concern about the duplexes is that when we were asked, when we had to walk through, we asked if the duplexes, if they do put duplexes in, are they going to be owned? Or are they going to be rented? I got a feeling they're probably going to be rented, so who is going to, if you're going to be renting those, how many people are you going to need? These rents are going to be astronomical, if you look at the rents that are in Portland, and they're moving up this way. So how many people are going to be living in these duplexes to pay the rent? Nobody, there's not going to be any control of that, so not, the people that are going to be living there aren't going to be owning it, so what do they care? What do they care about running around our circle at four o'clock in the morning and just, you know, raising havoc? That, that concerns me. Knowing that the law states now, and I don't know if the people are, I don't think they're here anymore, I think they left, that other complex that's here, they're zoning for lots, right? So they could put a duplex in their lot, and those people don't realize this now. Any lot that's available, you can put a duplex, if you can put a single-family home in, that's the law. I don't want duplexes in our neighborhood, like Kim said, we've been there for years, and originally said, single-family homes. I don't want the duplexes, and that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know there are a few more hands, go ahead, yep.
My name's Zach Cooperstein, I live at fifty-five Campbell Shore Road, but the, the lot that we're discussing tonight, to the rear of my... rear of my property, among a lot of concerns that I have, I guess, you know, the idea to me of putting duplexes in this neighborhood, it prioritizes the profits of developers over the interests of the residents who are already there. It's different than putting a single-family homes in a single-family neighborhood. It's hard to, it's really hard to argue that it wouldn't negatively impact the property values of the existing homes there, and essentially transfer that money directly into the pockets of developers who really have no interest in the neighborhood whatsoever. And it just, it's, it's just really not right. Like a few people have touched on previous to me, there's a reason that the people in that neighborhood are there. It's for, for the privacy, for the peace and quiet, and for roots, for being a place you want to be in. And introducing rental properties to that type of neighborhood introduces people who have no interest in the neighborhood. And that's a concern. And it just, it just doesn't seem right. Thanks.
Good job, Zach.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead. You have the in-person and the online cover tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Rick Light from 35 Fran Circle. I've submitted, many of the residents know, I've submitted a letter to the board, and I appreciate the chair's recognizing that and some of the points as being valid. I first want to say that I think D-Roma did a nice job putting the plans together. They were well-presented. They were quite, been through all the reports, the HydroCAD, it's well-put-together. But I think there are some, some basic principles that have been brought up tonight, and I want to first start by, I'm going to read some of my letter. And I hate to norm, I don't normally do this, I usually shoot from the hips, but I want to read part of it because I think it's germane to the context of what we're talking about. So if you will bear with me. First of all, the Fran Circle neighborhood that most of the people, not all, but some of the people here are from, was the back, if you look at this, the back, the subdivision for Fran's, for Campbell Acres started as three lots in '74. 50-acre lot, this lot, which was, this is a part of a three-acre, or three lots of division that JP referred to, and basically the Jenny roadside, eight acres. The back 50 acres or so is, was turned into Fran, basically Fran Circle and Jenny Drive. 18 lots, actually it was 19 now through an amendment. And those have been there since, well, late, it was approved in '77, so 30 years plus, and then Jenny Drive's been developed along the way. So one of the thoughts that came around when people heard about this was, they can't put duplexes because there's a covenant on the deeds. Well, unfortunately, the covenant on the deeds only goes with the Fran Circle neighborhood. But what it does, it sets up the precedent for the idea that the concept of this development, whether you stick it to the legal boundaries of the subdivision, is to be single-family homes. Sets the context, that was the idea, even though that this lot wasn't considered within that context. But having said that, let me just read something, I think it's maybe germane. "The applicant's proposed to develop three duplex dwellings on a 7.2 acres of woodlands in partial meadow, essentially within the Jenny Drive and Fran Circle neighborhood. The area's zoned RRA, and the zoning ordinance requires 80,000 square feet minimum lots and allows a 40,000 square foot per dwelling unit, which means duplexes are permitted," and not questioning that, "and they've done their net residential density calculations which support six dwelling units. But the applicant has stated repeatedly in their application, in all levels of the application, very clearly that the current proposal is for three lots with a private road and three duplexes or six dwelling units, not three, as JP reinforced. It's even in the stormwater study. So it's on the record that it's three duplexes, and I'll get to why I'm saying that later. As a proponent of smart growth principles, as the chair and others know, and responsible development, and I work with the development community, I would be remiss in not encouraging this infill form of development of land which is surrounded by residential, single-family homes in a 40-year-old neighborhood. I am not a nimby and never want to be. Indeed, I support the need to create additional housing density. However, if one wants to encourage additional density, that should be borne out in the town growth areas or less restrictive zones, excuse me, or districts run larger lots or areas with similar types of development. Not integrated into established, single-family subdivisions. Infill development, where there are existing roads, utilities, et cetera, as the planning board well knows, alleviates sprawl into more rural undeveloped areas of town. Infill development can fit well in an established neighborhood, if carefully integrated with the existing form of residential development, and that's critical. A proposal for three, single-family lots would be totally consistent with the character of the area and neighborhood, and would actually, would probably be help, you know, property values, not that that's a consideration for the board, but just as a comment. And complete, and I would completely support such a proposal all day long. I think infill development, this is a perfect spot for infill development, as we all know it in the planning community. However, the proposal for three duplexes to be, as we understand, potentially rental units, is not at all consistent with the existing neighborhood. Acknowledge that in an effort to increase housing opportunities for Maine, LD 2003 basically allows structures with two dwellings, duplexes on any lot as long as you can meet dimensional requirements of the town. So no one's arguing, I'm not arguing that you can't put duplexes, that's not the question. The question is, is it really within the character of the community, is it really appropriate for this particular area? That's really the question. And, and so, I already mentioned the thing about the deed covenant. But it is, so whether this was legally part of the Fran Circle, it is indeed part of the same neighborhood. We use the term neighborhood here, not technical subdivision. It's the neighborhood, it really is. So I think in overall, there is, and I'm going to, I wasn't going to go through the technical comments, but I think, given the conversation tonight, I'm going to bore people with a few, I think, technical points that are worthy of bringing to, elevate to discussion. The plans, again, I think the plans are very well-presented, JP. We talked about it, and JP was gracious enough to meet with the Fosters who are not here tonight, but they're their neighbors that are directly affected next door. One of the things with the plans I talked about was, the plans do not even show their home, which is only 60 feet away. And I talked to JP about it, he was going to put it on the screen tonight, on the aerial, it's hard to see, and it'll be on the final plan. Using, I assume you use LiDAR, the LiDAR topography doesn't pick up features, but usually you add those in by digitizing or by measuring and whatnot in the field. And it might be a good idea, even just a suggestion on the final plan, to show the new house that's going in next door, just by eyeballing it, just, it gives you a sense of context of where the tree lines are and that sort of thing. But something that is a little more technical, and I'm looking to Kristin here, is that, got to use the glasses here, 40113-1B4, or the ordinance, subdivision ordinance, requires the maximum lot length-to-width ratio three to one. Okay? And the board must make a finding to that effect. And a quick review finds the following, I'm not going to get into the details, it's in the letter, but Lot 1 does not even come close to meeting those standards. And that Lot 1 is one of those bizarre lots, and for the public, the reason why it was created is to create frontage, basically, and using the T and the hammerhead and that sort of thing. And so that lot is, is far and away, what that ordinance requirement was put in for is to prohibit those sort of spaghetti or odd-shaped lots. It doesn't even, it is actually technically, only 16% of the lot, if you look at it from that perspective, meets that requirement. So 86% of that lot is outside that requirement. Lot 2 meets the length-to-width requirement. Lot 3 does, also does not meet that standard, it's too narrow, and relative to its length, which is 690 feet. So I think on the basis of that, unless the staff or the board can find otherwise, those lots are not approvable. Okay? Road design, I think, is fine, you're allowed to use the 12%. I applaud the applicant for agreeing to widen it and pave it over the world's standards. I would caution the applicant, that, JP, that those soils, I know what the test pits say, look next door, the soils there are wet, you're cutting into the groundwater table, so I'd recommend, it's just, it's a private road, but you might want to consider underdrains. And, and take a look at that. On the buffer issue, the plan's Note 19 is interesting. Note 19 of the plan specifically says that the tree lines, as shown, and they may be, you know, tweaked for the final plan, are to be as constructed, or, you know, cut as permitted. So they're not meant to be graphical lines or conceptual lines, they're meant to be final lines, which I thought was pretty surprising, because that really restricts, if the developer wanted to make a wider home, he sunk without having an amendment to the plan. But I think what is critical and important to the Fosters who are not here tonight, I can't speak to them specifically, but JP, again, was gracious enough to meet with them, and I caught the tail end of that meeting, and was very work, and he was very workable, very, with the Fosters, and recognized their buffer requirements. Having a note on a plan isn't going to cut it. First day on a job, what happens with the tree cutters is, guy's not looking, his stuff's flag, he looks the other way, and those trees are gone. It can happen like that. It's the first five minutes of a job construction. There ought to be, along the Fosters, the southerly line, there should be a 30-foot minimum, you know, deeded buffer in on the plan as well. It's the only way to really affect a buffer, and I hope you'd agree with that. It's, so it goes into the deed as well. So, and that could be, typically, there'd be a note on the plan saying, stake buffer for code enforcement or cylinder review, or something like that. The other thing, are these, I don't know if you can answer this, JP, are these meant to be slab or base slab engraved frost walls? Or, you don't have to answer it now, but when we get into the context, or, or full basements? The reason I ask is, again, the groundwater table there, if you went with full basements, in order to discharge your footing drain, you'd be, just, you might need to cross individual property lines to get your drain to go by gravity. Septic systems, this is where the context of duplex versus single-family, and if they're going to produce a hydrogeologic study for final, has bearing. Because for a single-family, you're looking at probably, I'm assuming, two, a single-family, you might call it three-bedroom to play it safe. These are going to be two, I assume, two-bedroom dwellings, units, so four bedrooms, it's 360 gallons a day per, the septic systems are going to be larger for a duplex. And that has to go on the record as to how you're going to assess this. So I did a quick study, as a licensed site evaluator and a PE, I did a quick study using TP-7, which is the test pit on Lot 1, because it's a tight, tight area the way it's shown. And again, that tree line is, is meant to be regulatory, based on the note on the plan. And using the smallest system, I actually designed the system in the back of an Epi, using the smallest system, what we call an Elgin, which is a product that reduces your footprint by 40%, on a four-bedroom design, you cannot build that leach field, you can shape it different ways, you cannot build that leach field, meet your 10-foot requirement step back under the state wastewater code, and be 20 feet from a house foundation or 15 feet from a frost wall. Can't, it doesn't work. So something has to move there. So I would suggest that, and I think JP did mention, that final, they're going to do HHT 200s. So things will probably get tweaked when they do their final plan, showing the HHT 200s, and actually showing the grading and whatnot. Not to mention, that's not the grading, that's the system. The grading would spill onto the adjacent lot, so those tree lines would, would change. But just to note that, that there is a relationship between making it on record, going on record as a duplex, there are implications when you say that, that I think the board does have authority over, and it's not just a code officer decision, flip of a coin, it's going to be subdivision, or a single-family versus duplex. I've got a few other comments, but the one I did want to bring up is, and this goes, again, to the duplex versus single, is that, under the HOA, which is required to be submitted, and I'm sure the developer will submit for final, the HOA, again, is going to be a document of record. If you're going to submit a HOA and maintenance plan for the common areas and the waste, or the stormwater system, et cetera, and the roadway, all that, that's going to be, for rental units, it's going to be one entity. McConnell Brothers LLC, or Rental LLC, it's going to be one entity. So the framework of that HOA is going to be completely different than if it were three single-family lots. There, I mean, HOA documents can be, they can be formed any way you want, but legally, so that what's going to go on record is going to reflect presumably duplexes, and that goes on the record that they're going to build duplexes. So when you pull the building permit, you'd have to go and amend your HOA documents. So I think the planning board does have teeth and control over whether these are single-family or duplexes. I, in the beginning, I prefaced about that, I don't want to belabor this too much, but I did want to state that it's not, and regulatory-wise, it's not one of the specific standards that the board has to vote on. But, if I could find it here, the provision for the purpose, I wanted to quote this. "The purpose of the subdivision ordinance under 401.1F includes," and I quote, "minimizing impacts from new subdivisions on neighboring properties." It's not the formal standard that you have to make a finding of fact on, but it's the essence of what the whole subdivision ordinance is under the purpose of the document. So I think there is, you know, it's a little gray area there, but I think the board, you know, could stretch it, and maybe get, you know, review, but I think their, the intent is there that basically says neighborhood character counts. You can't throw it away. So one last comment, I think JP's going to love me for this. Streetlights. There isn't a streetlight on Fran Circle. And most of us are night-sky people. You want to walk at night, you bring your headlamp. And we live in Maine, and so I would support, if the applicant wanted to go, and it's up to the board, and get rid of the streetlight, go for it. But number two, if you're going to put in a streetlight, I just make a recommendation, I would strongly encourage you to not go with the Town and Country CMP standards. We all know about cutoffs and LED lights. High-pressure sodium was put in on the Clark block. You remember that, 20 years ago? The day it went in, it was out of date. There hasn't been a high-pressure sodium light put in anywhere that I, they don't even make them anymore. Metal halide came along. Metal halide is gone. It's LED, and it's cutoff style. So there, what you see, you could put a streetlight, and as you all know, with cutoffs at the right Kelvin, and you won't even see it. But do you really need it? And I would question whether the Fosters would want it. So I think you might have a good argument to not put a streetlight in, but I would highly encourage the applicant to not go with those CMP standards. They are 30 or 40 years old, and they're awful. And there's no cutoff fixtures on those. So, anyway, I've taken up enough time, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? Go ahead.
Craig Okanek, 20-Fran Circle. I think Rick did a perfect job at summing this up. The intent of this neighborhood is single-family homes. When this was all built, when this was all put together, I know on paper, the line stops right there, but the intent of this neighborhood was single-family homes. So just keep that in mind with everything. And everything else that Rick said, agree 100%. He's obviously the brains of the group here. Streetlight, don't put a frigging streetlight in. Come on.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anybody else? Going once, twice, all right. I don't see any, I don't see a hand raised online. Guess you covered it, Rick. So I'm going to close the public comment portion. So I'll offer that JP can come back up and answer any questions that he wishes. Before you do that, one thing, I'm glad Rick brought it up again, I was going to ask Kristin as a takeaway, we don't need to answer it tonight, but if staff could do research on the length-to-width.
Yeah, I do have some comment on that, if you'd like it tonight. Regarding the background on that. That's the one point I had time to look into.
Okay, so I guess we can, well, let me, well, let's not forget it, I'll let JP answer while things are as fresh as they are, but, so yeah, let's hold that thought. Yeah, go ahead, before you forget all that feedback that you just got.
Sure.
There's a lot of questions woven in there.
It's, I'm loud and clear, I've heard everything you've said, I took it to heart, you know, and I understand where you're coming from. I'm a, you know, a resident of Maine, I live in a neighborhood, I can, I feel what you're feeling myself. That said, I, I wish I had the control, it's not my project, it's not my money. I wish I could make it single-family homes, but it's not my choice. I will do my best to convey to the applicant that that's what the neighborhood like. As far as the streetlight goes, I side with everybody here. I prefer not to see it. I will ask the board for a waiver for that. As far as, I think I'm going to let, I can, there's a couple of things. With regards to the tree line, Mr. Light was correct. You know, there should be some sort of way or means of recording the tree line, and I believe there is. We're showing the tree line on our subdivision plan. That plan is recorded. So it's a physical deed. It's going to be memorialized in the County Registry of Deeds forever. So if that tree line is not as it's shown on the recorded plan, it's violation of the subdivision. So I think you have, we're going to fix the tree line to whatever it is on the final plan. With regards to the septic design, we've looked at it. The septics are approximately the right size based on the design flow for these. We are going to have a geologist design the septic systems, as well as provide nitrate plumes, our hydrogeologic assessment for it. And I don't expect the tree lines to move. Mr. Light was right, there is setbacks, there's a table of setbacks for septic systems, for subsurface disposal systems. And that includes different setbacks to different types of basements and foundations and buildings, and each of them are different depending upon the design flow. Those have been taken into consideration and will be, we're going to present a HHE 200 that's approvable. And as far as lot width to length, I understand where you're coming, Mr. Light, I understand where you're coming from, but my, the, I think the intent is to avoid having long skinny narrow lots that open up to big developable areas. The frontage of these lots makes the argument actually the reverse. They are much wider than they are deep. The frontage for lot one is along that side of the road. The frontage for lot two comes up from the end and goes through there. And then lot three is there. So the width is this, and the depth is that. So we're exceeding the three to one ratio, I believe. That's my interpretation, and I'd love to hear Kristen's, quite frankly. Aside from that, I don't have any other responses to any of the, I don't know that I missed any questions. I hope I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, if you wanted to share your initial research on that?
Yeah, initial feedback. I would say that the Town of Gray is very fortunate to have quite a few people actually who has some expert advice to share with our board, so I want to thank Mr. Light for that. These are good points for us to review. I did only get them Wednesday, so I don't have full responses. There are some that will probably want to run by our engineer as well to get you full feedback for what you're looking for. The lot width to depth question, interesting to hear, JP's looking at it the other way. So that's something we'd have to look at on how we'd want to interpret that, I guess, based on what the, maybe based on what the frontage is considered to be, and take another look at that. But in the meantime, for the board, I did ask our community development director, Doug Webster, who's been here for about 15 years or so and has that background, like how we dealt with this in the past, that it's not like a spaghetti lot like described in, I believe subdivision law, where it's typically waterfront, where it's a tiny little piece that, just to get waterfront. This is not that kind of situation. It looks at first blush like a planning board determination, really, on how you want to interpret the ordinance. So the background that Doug was able to provide was that the old language, which might be helpful to you to understand how it was previously before that one to three ratio was actually added, was the lot size, width, depth, shape, and orientation, and the minimum building setback lines shall be appropriate for the location of the subdivision and for the type of development used contemplated. That's the old language. And then when we updated, what was it, 2008 or something, at some point, that's when that one to three was added. And the one to three doesn't have a lot of detail for you about how to interpret it. So I think some of that, I can get, again, engineering input, but at some point, I think it comes down to how the board wants to interpret it and read that language.
Yeah, so that, this sounds like the exact kind of thing Doug would like to sink his teeth into, so.
Yeah, this is what he provided. And he said, this is a board, it's a board decision. It's not something that he's going to tell you yes or no, but it did not flag for us as staff as being an issue.
So if you could summarize that feedback and engineering feedback for the next memo?
Yes, we'll have a follow-up response to these points.
It's probably too early for us to really say one way or the other here tonight. Okay, I took a couple notes here. So first of all, thank you everyone for coming, and for those of you who spoke, it's always appreciated and helpful. In particular, something as small as the streetlight, we heard loud and clear, something like that. So it's very helpful. The difficult part is the part that there's only certain things we can do something about. We are at the planning board, and even though we're called the planning board, we aren't really planning in this case, we're reviewing an application, and our role is to apply the ordinances, sort of like we're quasi judicial, quasi judicial boards, so we're sort of like a judge. And we take the ordinances or the laws and apply them and approve or disapprove projects. So I, we've heard loud and clear your concerns, and the hard part is, we can't do, we can't do everything that you would like about all of them, unfortunately. Certainly some we can, but some, like we can't consider things like costs to develop. A lot of times to develop, the board might require them to do something they don't want to do, and the applicant might say, well, that's going to cost too much. And it would be the opposite. We would say, well, we can't consider that. That's not something we can consider. It's, you know, it's your problem that it costs too much. On the other side, we can't necessarily require things that aren't in the ordinance. So I appreciate, in particular, Rick's very thorough assessment. There's a lot of good stuff in there, and one of the things I'd like to ask Kristen is that, well, it's not a peer review per se. There was really everything sort of on the technical side. I started writing notes on his memo of things to ask JP to consider, and it was really, by the time I was done, it was the whole memo. So similar to how you include the staff review, staff comments, engineers' comments, I'd ask for the next memo, if you could sort of summarize Mr. Light's comments in a similar format. At least for me, I think everything in there was relevant and needs to be considered. So I think at the next meeting, we would basically walk through all of those in a similar format. I would offer to JP, you know, what in there he doesn't agree with, assuming it sounds like there's agreement on a lot of it, maybe not all of it, but we'll take that similar approach of, you know, if you don't say anything you agree with at all, and let us know what you don't agree with, and we can work through it. So I'd like to do that. The other, before I open it up to the rest of the board, the other comment I have is for Dan and Marty. I've heard many times, and you quoted it once tonight, and not just from you, but other counselors, about the comp plan and the overwhelming support that it had voted on by 60% of the people or whatever it was. You know, there's a room full of people here that I know you guys have both heard loud and clear, that may or may not, you know, be in alignment with what's in the comp plan, but I guess my point is there's other points of view than just that comp plan that personally a question relying on that high level of engagement simply because it was voted for. But you have a full room full of people here that hopefully you've heard loud and clear on one particular point, and hopefully you can work that into your priorities. I know in an email exchange, you had mentioned, Dan, duplexes I think are number two on the council's discussion list, and you're hoping to raise that up to number one. I don't want to speak for you, but that's pretty much what I read if I'm recalling correctly. I do think that's a high priority. You know, I've been on the planning board a long, long time, and this is not very dissimilar from, like, most of the projects that we get. We get out-of-town developers that buy a piece of land, and they come in and they do their thing, and they're in business, and they're in business to, you know, make profits, and that's their objective in this whole role. They're not necessarily looking out for the long-term interests and benefits of the town, and that's where the town council and the policy comes in. And even with that, as we saw earlier today, there's not always agreement on that. Mr. Maguire spoke about regulating self-storage units, and there was a citizen who held the opposite view, but it was discussed, and it was discussed respectfully, and it was worked through, and what I would ask, and I've asked before, and it hasn't gotten anywhere, but this topic needs, you know, that same level of discussion that self-storage units got, because there's a pattern here. This is the type of thing we get, and people are not always happy with it, and it hasn't been vetted through that council process the way I think it should be. So that's a bit of information I hope that you share back to the council to discuss. So I've talked enough now, which is way too much. Anything from the rest of the board, as far as what we've heard, what we've seen, what we want to see next?
I think it's late. I don't know. I appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you so much. It's really nice to hear, and I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, thank you. Anything from you, Melinda?
I really appreciate the engagement of the community. I can tell you're very passionate, and I'm really happy to live in a town that has such engaged people, so thank you, thank you for taking the time. The other thing I would just, I feel is worth noting, and I understand how passionate you feel that these duplexes are just going to ruin your neighborhood, but we need housing. They are allowed, and I have seen some really, that duplex, they're very likely to be a lot more like you, the people that end up living in a duplex than you would think. I've lived in a duplex. I live in a very small house that's very similar to those duplexes, and I think I would be a neighbor that you would like. Even when I rented, I was a really good neighbor. And just because someone doesn't own doesn't mean they're not a really good neighbor, and that they aren't a family, and that they aren't connected to the community. I understand that might not be your feeling. We will do what we can do to help make this project fit as much as possible in your community. But anyway, I just, I, I come to this role with my own life experiences and knowledge, so just consider.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Yeah?
I don't know if it's worth mentioning, but we have an audience, the LD 2003 updates as well.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I was going to ask, since you pointed a lot of things in my direction, if I could have a minute or two?
Yeah, I'd, sure, hang on, sorry. Let me answer. I mean, I'd rather not get into that whole LD thing, it's not really.
Just about the participation, that it's coming up?
Oh, yeah, I mean, let's not tie, let's not tie it up with this project, but I guess it's, sure.
I just wanted to throw out the question while you're all here.
I guess my, my point is it's separate from this project, but it's, I guess, your point is you want to share it with interested parties of what's coming?
Yes, yeah, that.
Yeah, that's, that's fair enough.
Just, while we have the opportunity, we don't always have an audience like this. But the, the two-family dwellings are a permitted use in almost every district in town right now, which is what they're referencing, that it is a permitted use. There are provisions coming out from the state that you may or may not have heard, that every town has to implement regarding density provisions. So we recently, the town recently, the council passed the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that allows single-family homes to have an accessory dwelling unit, which is a small apartment. And now we're working on the other two pieces of that law, which we are supposed to have in place by January 1, regarding increased density and affordability, like affordable housing projects. So if you have interest in this topic, I just wanted to mention that while you're here, that those pieces, we're trying to pull together all the changes that we've got to do to our ordinance to implement that state law, to bring before the council and the public for that review process. Again, there'll be public hearings, there'll be talking about it coming up later this fall. So just want to put that on your radar. You can sign up for council agenda notices on our website. You can sign up to get emails last when the agendas come out, so you'll see what's cooking. And it may be, it sounds like something this crowd may be interested in, that's just why I wanted to share that.
Yeah, thank you. All right, and Dan had some thoughts he wanted to share as well, so please.
Yeah, I think, well, especially while everyone is here. Where to start? The, I've been on the council for six years, I've just started my third term. Duplexes has been something I've been trying to get the council to talk about now for several years. As a counselor, I have no power of my own. In order to affect any change on the council, one needs to convince at least two other people beside yourself that you have a good idea. I got up and spoke at the podium tonight because I'm not here, I can't speak for the council in this meeting. I don't have that authority, so I wanted to speak for myself as a private citizen. I have gotten a couple of emails, or been copied on a couple of emails about this issue, and that has been very, very helpful. A lot of times when the council works, quite frankly, it's crickets. We don't get a lot of input. The self-storage unit hearing that we had earlier tonight, there's, there has been some input from some people, and that's always helpful. It always makes things take longer, but that's not necessarily a bad thing, because the goal is to come out with the best product in the end. I do refer to the comp plan. We spent a lot of time as a community on the comp plan. Besides the referendum vote, which was the highest turnout in the town's recent history, a significant number of people voted in support of what's in the comp plan. While the comp plan was being developed, there were dozens of meetings, and literally several hundred people participated in those meetings to give input to the council as to what that final plan should look like. No plan that we can create can take into consideration every possible permeation of the decisions that have to be made. The planning board continually asks us to write as definitive ordinances as we can to help them out so that there is as little gray area as possible. But no matter what we write for ordinances, we'll never be able to take all the judgment out of it. It is going to be important to have dedicated people like the folks that serve on the planning board to take what's written in, to interpret it to the best of their ability. People own their property. Writing rules to limit what people can do with their property is an issue in and of itself. But what someone does with their property that affects the value of our property is another issue too. I don't know what the final solution is. Kristen mentioned the accessory dwelling unit law that the state passed and has forced on us, that with the exception of shoreline zoning, allows someone to build an accessory dwelling unit on their property. The vast majority of parcels in the Town of Gray will be eligible under this law to build an accessory dwelling unit, which we've put an initial limit at at 750 square feet. But you can understand what things are going to start to look like if this becomes a popular alternative. It's going to change neighborhoods. It's going to change neighborhoods significantly. The only, we don't have much control over that. That's being dictated to us from Augusta. That's being dictated to us from Augusta. So some of these things that come to us aren't things that we want to do by choice. The duplex issue is number two on the council's list of priorities. I am hoping, because of what we've heard tonight and the emails that I've received, that we can bump that up. But I don't know what the final solution is gonna be, to be honest with you, because the state law that's just come down is kind of cutting the line, if you will, with our priorities, and this happens to the council fairly frequently, where something comes up and we have an idea to do this work, but for whatever reason, we're forced to do something else. And the ADU laws is definitely something that the states put deadlines on us. The first one was July 1 of this year. We met that one. We thought they'd postpone it, and in the end, that they did, but we weren't sure that they would, so we had to meet the law as we understood it. And there's more things in the pipeline. So I am encouraged that you're all here. I would hope that you all stay engaged in one way or another in this discussion, but not just this one, others. There's a large Department of Transportation project to, that will completely rework Main Street. All of the stormwater in the Main Street needs to be replaced. When they do that, there's a huge opportunity for the town. We have plans to try and fix Yarmouth Road from the village up to the top of the hill, which I've been, lived in Gray for 35 years, and we've been trying to fix that for as long as I've been in town. So the more engagement we have, the better, I'm convinced, the better the solutions that we'll end up with. So I appreciate everybody's input, and I'm not the only counselor, so you can feel free to write to the other four, too, and that will, that will help things. But I do take, the reason why we have a liaison on all the council committees is so that I can take this information back to the full council. And there are other councilors who sit on all the other town council committees that do the same thing. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you. Thanks for the time, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. So I think that brings us to the end of this project for tonight, unless you have any thoughts from anyone. We've gotten you, I think, all we can, JP, and you've heard loud and clear from us, and especially from the audience, what they're hoping for, so please take all that back to your client and bring back something that, you know, addresses what you will, and what you can, and what you must, because there's a little bit of all three mixed in there, I think, so. We look forward to seeing you back here, unless you have anything else you're looking for from us.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll close out this item then. Next up is motion to adjourn. I guess you, oh, you have to make it.
So moved.
I guess I have to second it.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, we can't even vote, so.
Yeah.
If there's anyone who's interested in applying for the planning...
There's two spare spots.
There are two spots on the planning board. There are roughly 85 people, folks who live in the community like you, that work on the various town council committees that there are, and there are open slots on those. I know the planning board can feel daunting to people, but it's, you know, town government is a team sport, so, I mean, it's not like you're doing it by yourself. And you have people that have experience to help you along the way, whether it's this committee, or whether you're interested in the dry mill schoolhouse, it doesn't matter. But I would encourage everybody to think about volunteering if they're interested.
Thank you. I did have one other thing, I remember, just to acknowledge, we did receive letters from Mr. Light, who read from his. Kim Shelley submitted a letter that was signed by a number of neighbors.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. And then Zachary, I'm sorry, I forget your last name, also submitted a letter, and I wanted to make sure, JP, you got copies of all three?
I don't believe I have. I've got Mr. Light's.
Okay, so.
I'll forward it to you tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay, so Kristen will get, Kristen will...
I may have.
Yeah, okay, well, Kristen will ensure you have all three, and those were the only three we got, right? I didn't get any other ones.
I haven't received any others, no.
Okay, yeah. All right, thanks again, everyone. Appreciate you bearing with a long, long meeting and coming to participate. So we will adjourn.